Good morning. Calling this meeting to order, thank you all for coming in today. Good morning, John Coaches.
Last one always gets in trouble.
That's what always gets in trouble. Thank you all for being here today. And we do have a pretty full agenda today, so we're going to jump right in. And the first item we have on our agenda is Lauren Byers from Soil and Water Conservation Base. Please step to the podium. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks so much for having me. And like you said, my name is Lauren Byers. I'm the Wildlife Education Specialist, Fairfield Soil and Water Conservation District. And today I just wanted to talk a little bit about our upcoming annual meeting. It's actually going to be our 82nd annual meeting, so it's kind of exciting. We are going to be hosting this on Thursday, September 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It will be at the Villard Sport Lions Club House. You're familiar with Sweet Corn Festival Grounds, that's kind of where that building is located. And we are going to be taking tickets that are $20 each. And that's going to help cover the cost of some of the delicious food that we're going to have there. Leaf Smoked Barbecue is going to be bringing pulled pork, some house-made barbecue sauce, and some other really good food. And we're also going to have a presentation by the Buckeye Lake Historical Society. Historians are going to be coming from their, from their place to tell us a little bit about the history of the area. And then we'll end the night with our conservation awards. So we'll be giving out awards for the Cooperator of the Conservation Education Award and the Conservation Partner of the Year Award. So if you guys are interested in coming out to that, so you guys can just submit a ticket with that $20. That can be found in our newsletter and around a few extra copies of that with me today. Or of course, you can stop by our office. And now, one of the really important things happening at our annual meeting is our election. We have a board of supervisors, five publicly elected individuals that serve on that board. And you can cast your vote. We have one spot open at the moment and two people running. That would be Jonathan Bovin and Randy Whistler. If you want to cast a vote for that, there are three ways to do that. Come to our annual meeting. You can also stop by our office during our business hours from 8 to 4. Or you can request an absentee ballot. And you can do that by also calling into our office to get that. And the election runs from August 27th to September 25th. So yeah, if you have any questions about that, again, all the information is in our newsletter, which you can find on our website, works up on the screen now. Or first, you can ask me as well. That's it.
All right, questions? Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
So obviously, you being the Wildlife Specialist and you show like that.
Yeah.
You know, one of the difficult issues we deal when we deal with wildlife there is geese.
Yep.
And not everybody likes this, but I'm a board member of Black Island for tomorrow. And we concentrate on water quality. And geese don't help the situation. Matter of fact, it's proven that they are very detrimental to water. They pollute and that sort of thing.
Yep.
But what we do with egg handling.
Okay.
To reach the population and to protect those, which I call operations based on wildlife. You can able to dramatically keep the population because they are problematic.
Yeah, yeah, there's definitely a very large population of geese there. And each one produces a lot of waste. So I definitely know what you're talking about in terms of what they're adding to the lake there. So Schizor's management program going on with that.
Going back about three years, we were about 13,000 egg samples. Four down to 800.
Yeah, I might have to go check it out.
And we do a complete conjunction of the department.
Yeah, I'd love to come out and join you guys sometime, see, see what you have going on up there.
So you did, is that major? You know, does the issue?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I will say most of the time, if I'm getting calls about geese, generally it's because they're causing an issue for someone. So obviously, they're one of our protected species protected by the Migratory Bird Species Act. But yeah, there are different permits that business owners or links, park districts, things like that can get to sort of get the geese under control. By those means we're talking about, whether it's adding the eggs, doing the roundup. So yes, there are social permits.
And the geese we're talking about are non-micra property or home.
That's true. It's gotten a little warmer during our winters here. So they don't often find the need to actually migrate away from here. So they do stick around. Okay.
Lauren, thank you so much for being here and for your presentation. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Rick, was that your alarm to time for the commission meeting?
It's time to start, but I'd get better if you didn't.
All right, this is the time we set aside for public comments. If you'd like to address a commission, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Good morning, Ray.
Good morning. I haven't changed locations. And Rick made me feel good this morning. He couldn't get his phone shut off and so forth. So I understand how that's happened. Things about what we're doing and what we're dressed for, what we're doing makes a lot of difference. And we had to look twice at you this morning, Mr. Davis, because you're dressed up pretty charming. And I know you're relaxed and enjoying it. It's plain to me that the way things change that we're living in day to day. It isn't only in big cities that they have things happen. But it's in our local community. We had an incident yesterday that we normally don't have. Family, we pray for in this case. We don't know why they happen sometimes. We need to support those people that are involved. So at this time, I turn to pray. Lord, we know that we don't know what the future holds for us. Come before us this morning and pray that in our daily walk with you, guide and direct us and help us on this need. What is happening and how we can help. We live people here in this room. They're involved in the actions of the county. They go beyond the county and they go down to the townships too. So we just live them, Lord, each one of them. Guide and direct them and walk with you. And we pray for guidance that only wisdom that only you can give. To help us in listening and communicate with you. Listening. One of the prayers today.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission this morning? From Jerry?
Good morning. I'm Jerry Starner. I live at 944 West Ballroom, Southwest, in the middle of the country. I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Fix for attending. Great class, he appreciated that. And Ani, I just want to say sorry. Well, I appreciate it very much, and I think I speak for the majority. And all commissioners, I mean, you really do appreciate me. And personally, I'd just like to say, you know, I've attended a lot of these meetings for the solar stuff, but really, everybody, and I'm continually impressed by people. And I do appreciate very much that.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission this morning? Good. I did get applause last night. Kind of getting used to that. All right, thank you all for coming today. Stephen, legal update? Okay. County administration update, Ani?
Thank you, Commissioner. So the CCIO policy team is hosting five regional meetings to bring the commissioners together to discuss pertinent policy issues and funding, including, that was included in the state operating budget. There's five different sessions throughout the state. The one for our central region will be on October 3rd in Delaware County. I do plan to attend, but let me know if you'd like for me to RSVP for you as well. Speaking of meetings, got to change up for a number of meetings in the coming weeks. So next week, we will be here, August 19th at our normal time. But that afternoon, we will go and do our county employee recognition event. And that's being posted at Smeck Park. And thank you to Jeff and the HR team for organizing that, as well as Marcy and her team at County Parks for their willingness to allow us to be there for that event. And then on August 26th, we will have the meeting at 3:00 PM. Because CCIO will be holding their summer symposium on that Monday and Tuesday. So we'll be getting back into town a little bit later. And then for the week where we would normally be meeting on September the 2nd, which is a Tuesday, that meeting will take place on September the 4th at 9:00 AM. And I understand Commissioner Davis will be out that week. And then there is no meeting on September the 9th. So just a few changes in the coming weeks, wanted to make sure you're all aware of. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 24 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. We do have two resolutions with, between the county and the America 250 Ohio Committee and the America 250 Ohio Commission for the Fairfield County Veterans Hall of Fame. And this is to appropriate the grant funds. The Fairfield County America 250 Ohio Committee applied for and will receive $5,000 in grant funding for that purpose. Sheriff's Office also has a resolution to approve an agreement with the Board of Commissioners. The Sheriff's Office is in the U.S. Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service for Housing Federal Prisoners in the Fairfield County Jail. Thank you, Sheriff, for your work on this contract, as well as Jeff Porter. But Sheriff, would you like to add anything to that?
No, we're just getting prepared to move into the parade.
Thank you very much. And then Soil and Water has a resolution to sign the Title Services Agreement for the Myers Farm through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Asement Purchase Program. Art, any budget update?
The only update is to remind everybody that the Level 3 budget access ends on August 27th, which is a Wednesday. What do you know from the comments?
That's a important question.
Definitely.
I mean, we were looking over one of the state boards with that extra $19 million on that one line item that threw everything off. Creating cause the state to look like its sales tax went up by 12% while ours only went up by 4%. Did you ever find out what was going on?
I did not.
All right, Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. Commissioner, let's see how the meeting at L of CAA on August 13th at 9:30 AM with Community Action and Representative Boring. The Mike Ode Children's Playground Dedication is August 14th at 10:00 AM at Community Action. The Family and Children First Council Executive Committee Meeting is August 15th at 8:30 AM at the Agricultural Center. The email bulletin that Ani spoke about from CCIO is in your packet. The Fairfield County 4-H Summer Fest Awards Program is August 17th at 7:00 PM at the Old General Sherman Middle School. The Violet Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hear an application for a variance for the property located at 7415 Diley Road on August 21st at 7:30 PM at Violet Township Administrative offices. And correspondent CFLP Solid Waste District sent their combined education and recycling second quarter report. And the Commissioner's Office received a petition for an expedited Type 2 annexation of 70.765 acres plus or minus from Violet, from Walnut Township to the Village of Baltimore. Agent for Commissioners, Jeff Reifinger. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Thank you. Updates from elected officials and department heads. Dr. Wool?
We are preparing for school and so forth. Stroes Boot Camp begins in the next week or so, which is our week-long staff training. We've been working the staff backup and then starts. So as everyone is, it's not getting prepared and getting it back. So that's where our efforts are.
Soil and Water, Chad?
I'd just like to say thank you for the support. Especially from the presentation, the advocate that's been trying to base, I think, like the original advocates. So good try for quite a year. So appreciate the support of that program.
Thanks for being here. Tiffany?
Okay, thank you.
Helen?
Last week, I reported that we were going to have a meeting at One Township regarding footprint regulations. We called that meeting. It was to discuss potentially go-fill along West Bank and one of the main areas where the MS Consultants has studied that particular area. We had, I think, about 50 folks who showed up and actually pretty supportive effort. So our next step is to get our little working group back together, review the draft language, and then probably move into the adoption phase.
Appreciate your reference. Sheriff Lake?
Apparently, I have two employees that are in the NACO leadership training. Thank you to County Administrator making that possible for them. They're pretty excited, looking forward to taking part in that. And at the end of this month, I believe, we will have our final inspection for our Ohio Collaborative Accreditation Certification. Should we achieve that accreditation, we'll be 30 law enforcement agencies within the state, of which there are 950, that will have that state certification. Accreditation. You know, that's just kind of business as usual, and it's always busy. So trying to serve and protect the best way that we can for residents.
So being one of 30 and over 900 is a pretty big deal. So what does that accreditation mean?
But that, what, so basically, the Collaboration Board, it's a board that basically sets up this standard for the whole state. And it's made up of law enforcement, legislators, prosecutors, citizens. They set the standards for what they believe an accredited law enforcement agency should be able to achieve in the state. And basically, it is, you can look and see that we're already collaborative certified. 12 standards, so it increases the number of standards to like around 30. And it's a pretty comprehensive plan, I guess, for state-of-the-art law enforcement. So once we achieve that, we'll be in that tier.
Outside of just being outstanding in what we do, are there other benefits from that accreditation?
Yeah, it make, it requires that you have certain policy procedures, practices, that you follow best practices. So all those are void part of your policy. You have to substantiate the fact that you're actually doing those things. It's subject to inspection. To achieve that, then every year you have to redo it. So it continues to, hopefully, there won't be any additional changes. So this process for probably the last 15, 20 years, that's been, every year they add a little more. And this is a, taking this, this leap into this, and that kind of is odd because it's called OCLEAP. Once we attain that OCLEAP status, there shouldn't be any more. There may potentially be a couple tweaks here and there, but it shouldn't change over the years.
Will the Sheriff's Office be looked upon more favorably in grant applications or anything like that, having achieved accreditation?
Yeah, through OCJS, they look at that and see if you have that accreditation. And you get the go-ahead, I guess we'll call it, to apply. Certain funding revenue streams are only limited to folks with that type of accreditation. It's a, they put incentives in place to make sure that other law enforcement agencies take this step to get this accreditation. So it's, all in all, it's a lot of work, but it's a good thing in the long run. It also, from a risk assessment standpoint, if folks see that attorneys or whoever would see that you have this accreditation, they know that they're not going to find a loophole or a lack or deficiency in your policy. Does that as well.
And you say that's this week or next week?
The month. Around the end of the month, we'll have the final inspection. When we do, I'll make that.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you. Good luck. Dr. Brown?
Good morning. We are continuing our sexennial informal hearings. We're going to continue those through September 4th. And we're learning information and we're receiving information. At the same time, the greatest feedback we're receiving is that people really do appreciate the information. And sometimes we're readying ourselves for the next conversation because there is a great deal of levy fatigue. And there is a conversation surrounding the need for property tax reform, as you all know. And I'll continue to provide the summaries of any lessons and feedback that we're getting. With the Walnut Local School District, they had an emergency last week where they needed to have a resolution for necessity and a resolution to proceed on the same day. Just to be pointing out that we were able to accommodate their need for that. And thank you to the prosecutor's office and how they are always making sure that we're not in that particular situation because it's quite difficult to do something for which we have 10 days, do it within 10 minutes. It is not impossible. We were able to do it. But at the same time, to appreciate how the prosecutor makes sure that doesn't happen on the most circumstances where we're seeing levies that need to go on to the ballot.
The informal conferences till September 4th?
Yes.
Are there any slots available?
Yes. We'll make room for anyone who wants one. We're very much, yeah. And it's that individualized attention. And we'll even spend hours with someone if that's what they want and that's what they need. And some people do want, and it's not about valuation typically when we're talking about topics that go on a longer period of time. And usually, that's very quick conversation because people agree about the market. It's usually conversation about things other than valuation. I also want to report out that we're going to begin some training for townships and school districts. And we're looking to the early part of '26 for that. Something's a little bit different for us, but I think it is something that's needed just to help improve various ways that we receive information, various ways that we exchange information as well. The big and beautiful pact. We'll provide in your DVD folder next week, a summary of how that will be something that we're examining very carefully right now because there'll be some changes to how W2s are reported in terms of overtime so that people can have that credit. It'll certainly impact Sheriff's Office and CJDC and others who have actual overtime. So we are working on that. In '26, things will be reflected on the W2 specifically. But since '25, we haven't really been capturing the premium separately from overtime. So it'll look a little bit different. But we'll work with the IRS in ways that we can have an agreed-upon methodology and making that available for people to have the deduction in '25. Seeing the sheriff here, I want to say thank you to Chief Collins. He gave me a guided tour of the training center. And I really did appreciate seeing that in its full fruition and was able to participate in a simulation. I really enjoyed it, was able to redeem myself a little bit from the FBI training, which I want to go back and take again because I did well this time. And maybe it's because I knew folks around me and Chief Collins was so very patient. But it was a very good simulation. And the folks there are really dedicated to the training, so really do appreciate that facility. The federal audit has completed. We have no major issues to report. Some lessons that I learned, but no major issues to report. This week, we are with Pickaway County. We are training their weights and measures inspectors, helping them out, helping the neighbor out. That's always important to do. I have two very positive things I want to report as well. We have a new baby in the auditor's office, and that always brings great joy. There's nothing greater joy than welcoming a new baby. Michael and his family are welcoming baby Eloise. Yes, she is named for Eloise, the books. And then also want to report that I have flyers for a fundraiser if you want to continue to help support FIDO. And on August 25th, if you go to Texas Roadhouse, and you can automatically be able to provide a portion of your bill to FIDO. So I have some flyers for that. I'll put it on the table. You have to have a flyer in order to participate.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Josh, thanks for being here.
We're working still with Village and Villard Sport on their upcoming projects. And we started helping. That's some CDG money for Updade Center, baseball field facility. So we've been helping them a little bit.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ray?
So last week, I had the honor of hosting the, our mode retreat. So I'm the president of the Ohio Development Exchange. This year is my final year. And that is a group of economic developers that work with One Columbus on building strategy and working together as a region. And they call it the Columbus Way. And that's something that people know about actually across the country because it's just impressive how well everybody gets along and works together. That's not the case in a lot of other regions where everybody's bidding for stuff. Part of it is because regions growing, so we don't have to, you know, fight for scraps like some other communities. But, you know, it was great working with our One Columbus partners and building some strategies to look ahead to the next five years. We're in a, we're in a good place, a great place. And looking forward to seeing that growth continue especially.
Please.
So you've probably seen some of the national data suggesting that the labor market might be softening nationally. I was curious if you've received any signs or tells of anything.
Yeah, I mean, our employment rate has got up around here. Our employers are having easier time hiring people before we're, we're, we hardly get an application. We're still, especially on the, I would say, the white-collar type jobs, getting lots of applicants for those jobs. Manufacturing, construction, there are still lots of opportunity and a lot of centers there. But a lot of the office-type jobs are, we're starting to see a lot more competition.
So I've been reading a little bit about how artificial intelligence is starting to, just starting to displace those office workers that you're referring to. And particularly the lower-level office work, white-collar work. It's just starting to be displaced by AI. People are going to have to make adjustments.
One of the things that, you know, I asked somebody from Jobs Ohio last week is what keeps you up at night? You're at the meeting and he said AI and what's that going to do with the jobs? Not, not 10, 20 years out, but the next five years.
I'd see the inflation data came out that combined was up to 2%.
Yeah, I mean, that inflation will decrease as the economy, you know, slows a little. So I can stand and hand, but, you know, that's that Columbus, we're in a really good position because you look recession in, in 2007, very diversified economy. So, but the interesting thing is some of those, some of those sectors that buoyed our economy in that time are immune to, are recession-proof anymore, such as colleges. Part of that has been, what helped always hit the late Columbus and state of states have cuts, federal government cuts. So, you know, it's going to be an interesting ride, but I, I think Columbus over almost any region in the Midwest. We're still getting lots of interest. We're getting a lot of interest on the manufacturing side. About 60% of the leads of One Columbus are all manufacturers. It's just trying to, once again, it all comes back to workforce, trying to build that workforce up.
Right.
I remember when I got here, I said, why don't we have more offices? And, you know, we should have like an insurance company should have like a actual location here because we have all these people leaving and going to Columbus to work. And now I'm like, oh, good, it's going to be less.
All right, thank you, Ray. Mr. Coaches?
Just a couple updates on.
Uh, just a couple of updates on, I think we'll be with the SBA this week doing assessments on a few on the ground with them, businesses, presidents. And obviously, we submitted our application or consideration for state disaster relief funds for public side projects and restructuring. We need to hear back from the government on that. That total was nearly $3 million. Jurisdictions. I mean, it was a sizable toll. Most being a green intention.
While you're on that, if I, I got a call from Greenfield Township President yesterday, whose culvert that was, you know, adjacent to his property had washed out. And as a result, he lost more than half of his driveway. He's got a fairly long driveway and it also had washed out. And he asked if there was a way for him to get reimbursed that. I said, I think that would be because it was a culvert, Greenfield Township culvert, that as they get money to replace that culvert, they would help with any adjacent properties that would damage this from all of that. Is that accurate?
I don't know for sure. That is, that is a unique situation. I will have those folks Thursday with the SBA side, but I, I think that's a question.
I asked him to reach out to Greenfield Township to make sure that his property was included in their application.
Yeah, it, um, not having FEMA, usually FEMA, we know a little bit more about, that this will be our first attempt at just state disaster relief funds. It's a new program and, I don't know.
Yeah, all right. Please proceed.
Uh, we're just
Greenfield Township by
Oh, I know. So that's, I mean, they had several, you know, Haven's any work.
Please proceed.
That's it. Facilities. Projects going on. Corey doesn't, because I'm picking on him this week. JFS building in 239 has a lot of projects this week.
Okay. Thank you for your update. Amanda.
Uh, just a word of thank you to the staff at the Workforce Center for their patience. Construction there has led few tech related outages. They've been very patient with us. We've tried to, you know, make our way through that. Thanks to the facilities folks as well. You know, we're taking care of them and we are getting closer.
All right.
Uh, September 19th, ODIJFS Director Dan Schreiber is coming to visit our agency along with a number of his senior leadership officials to shadow all the systems eligibility workers. We'll actually kind of be on the phone with them as they go through their phone interviews, things like that. Several months ago, we had a group come from ODIJFS, kind of their middle level managers that came and were really impacted by and suggested to the director and his team on the day, that part as well. So they're coming.
Oh, I'd love to hear more about that. Jeff Porter.
We are undergoing our renewal process with our insurance carriers. One of the observations that we've had after this, our initial meetings, is that we are continuing to experience high utilization and also our network providers have all renegotiated contracts with our carriers. So we are also seeing a significant upward push in pricing and costs. So we're going to seek to address that as best we can as we continue through this process.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you all for being here and giving us those updates. Old business, Commissioner Davis.
I don't think there's business. I suppose may know, friend of mine Randy Clark, because his mother passed away. So.
His best honor condolences. Commissioner Levesey.
So last week, myself on the portal, others, we're at the Athena Award and Jennifer Centerley was the recipient. And very well deserved.
All right. So for old business for me, last week, I had the CCO invited me to address the Association of Regional Planners to tell them the Fairfield County story and mentioned our work with Holly several times and that. And a lot of those folks know and respect you very well. So, but it was a good conversation. The following day, Rick and I hosted a number of folks from a variety of places to talk about a site that we're working on. We've been working on for quite a while on Route 33. And we also, as a part of that conversation, continued to talk about the potential Route 33 70 connector. Congressman Balderson was in the meeting, State Representative Ray, the Department of Development, One Columbus, you know, how business roundtable and
Say Balderson.
Yep. Who was the, the main job now?
Fernando, but Jobs Ohio was there. But consultants.
Yep. Um, the guys who create the jobs. Yep. Anyway, it's not Jobs Ohio. It was, yeah, it was Jobs Ohio. Thanks. Yeah, sorry. Just having a little brain cramp there for a minute. Anyway, a very positive conversation. And some potential momentum to move that project forward with Jobs Ohio with support of all those other groups. So we're going to keep pushing on that and continue to push on that 3370 connector. So I appreciate Rick hosting. We did run into the technical difficulties that Dan referenced earlier, because there was no internet, because the cable had been cut, but we worked our way through it.
It's part of the time.
Yeah. Lastly, Commissioner Davis and Ani and I were in attendance at the Surler hearing in Amanda last night. And Commissioner Davis and I both addressed the judges that were there. So I feel like we're doing our part. I don't, oh, I do have new business. We are restarting the meetings with the different townships and villages. So Greenfield and Lancaster, Thurston Walnut, Millersport and Walnut, and Baltimore Liberty. We're trying to get them all together here next week individually to push forward with the agreements on NTAs and things like that. So coordinating all of that and Ani, I'll get with you on when we need the room. New business, Commissioner Levesey.
So this afternoon and tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Congressman Balderson at his Pickerton office. And why that's so important? Congressman Balderson represents us. He also represents, I believe, 10 other counties or portions there. But he, he chose to have his office here in Fairfield County in Pickerton.
All right. Commissioner Davis.
Sir, I have a question for Stephen. All right. The week Commissioner Fix and I testified at that hearing last night. Being a little bit, not much. A question I want to ask about is the lawyer for the lawyer company asked, I was there, I think, asking, I said, Sheriff, I didn't know why I was being asked. And I just, without driving, I caught myself thinking, wait a minute, are there minutes in a day when I'm not accounting commissioner? Because I'd like to have those minutes.
There are. The reason they ask that is very similar to what happened up in Walnut Township when some of their trustees went and spoke about the issue. They wanted to make sure that it is you in your personal capacity representing your opinions to the powersciting board as opposed to an official statement from the county commissioner being presented to that kind of local collective that they're getting.
It's the resolution.
Right. So it seems like a slightly silly question to ask, given that you have officially gone on the record and voted on the underlying resolution.
Yeah, you know, I mean, Mike's a lawyer. I'm not scared of him. He's from a big fancy firm. So I figured maybe it's something real smart that I couldn't figure out.
No, I, I think it's just to make very clear for the record at the powersciting board that what you're saying in that hearing is just related to your personal opinions as opposed to official statement of the commissioner.
But I have said no, and here's a kind of
Certainly could have, but there might be some questions about that regarding whether or not you were actually empowered by your fellow commissioners to issue that statement.
So I want to thank Commissioner Davis for going first. So he got the cross examination. And because he was being cross examined, he did get no applause. And because I was not cross examined, I got a lot. And
I There are other reasons for that, but go ahead.
I also answered that I was there on my own behalf because we're not, we've already spoken as a commission and that's in the record. So I just wanted to say what I had to say as, but when they asked if I worked in the area, yeah, kind of commissioner, I worked. Yeah. All right. Any other stuff for our review before we go to our voting session? All right. Thank you all again for being here today. If you all would please rise if you're able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance is inspired by the United States of America into a republic which stands on a nation underground and with liberty and justice for
Yeah, it's funny. You guys all know my girlfriend Liz and her son Owen, who's been living with us now for a bit, graduated from EMT school last Friday. He was pretty excited because he got to lead the pledge and he was a little bit nervous about it. And I said, Owen, all you really got to do is stand up, put your hand over your heart and say, I pledge allegiance. And everybody knows this and they're all going to follow along and you'll be fine. And he did great. So anyway, Rochelle, do we have any announcements? I'm looking for a motion for the approval of minutes of the August 5th meeting.
There.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero. Early Commissioners Resolution 2025-8.12.a, resolution to amend Resolution 2024-6.25.b, which accepted the transfer of governance from the city of Lancaster for the department, then known as Lancaster Fairfield County Transit.
Under Commissioners, I move Resolution A, B, C, and D.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey. Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Board of Elections Resolution 2025-8.12.e, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category, Board of Elections Fund 2884 SOS 2025 Primary Election Funding.
Still move.
Sure.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Court of Common Plea Resolution 2025-8.12.m, resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category, Fairfield County Adult Probation Fund 2365 County Probation.
Clear. Fairfield County Court of Common Plea, I move Resolution 73.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Economic and More Force Development Resolution 2025-12.h, resolution authorizing approval of repayment of advanced general fund, Fund 2831 WIOA 2021.
Discussion. It's Fund 7831, but it's, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency Resolution 2025-p12.h, resolution to request for appropriations from unappropriated for EMA Public Utilities Commission of Ohio Grant Fund 2898-8374.
Under Fairfield County EMA, I move Resolution I, J, and K.
Sure.
I wonder if there's ever times that it is inappropriate. Further discussion?
Uh, this is actually for Grant to train dispatchers on hazmat response. So we need to, which we did with Sheriff's Office over in cities.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Engineer Resolution 2025-8.12.m, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category, County Engineer 2024 Vehicle for Materials and Supplies.
Still move. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Facilities Resolution 2025-8.12.m, resolution to approve a contract amendment between Steve Hammond, Hall Incorporated, DBA, SHP Architects Incorporated, and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
Still move.
Discussion.
Signing project management for the space for the building trades area at the workforce.
Construction continues. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Job and Family Services Resolution 2025-8.12.m, resolution to approve a memo expense memo received for the cost of versatility that gets paid at Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for Fund 2072 Public Children's Services.
Under Fairfield County Jobs and Family Services, I move Resolutions M and P. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Sheriff Resolution 2025-8.12.q, resolution authorizing approval and agreement with the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners, the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office, and the U.S. Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service for housing federal prisoners in the Fairfield County Jail.
Fairfield County Sheriff, probably Resolutions Q, R, S, T, and Q.
All right. In discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From South Central Major Crimes Unit Resolution 2025-8.12.b, resolution to authorize the Fairfield County Commissioners to sign the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit Subgrant Award Agreement for the Attorney General Drug Abuse Response Team 2025 Grant.
Hello.
Sure.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Shoreland Water Conservation District Resolution 2025-8.12.w, a resolution to sign the title services agreement for the Myers Farm through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of
Still move.
Discussion. Is what you were referring to earlier. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment Bills Resolution 2025-8.12.s, a resolution, a resolution authorizing approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioners approval.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August 19th at 9:00.
Hey, is there any other business before the commission this morning? I'm looking for motion. Okay, we will take a 10 minute recess and the three of us with Ani will be working on the state of the county.
You know, the public's
Yes, correct.
If any of you really want to be a part of that, I bet. Uh, thank you all for coming today. Hope you all have a great afternoon.